Good morning, everyone. My name is Diane Havler and I am Chief of the HIV ID and Global Health Division here at San Francisco General and the Director of the AIDS Research Institute. On behalf of CFAR, the ARI, and Prevention Sciences, Dr. Gandhi and Dr. Johnson and I would like to welcome you to this very special World AIDS Day presentation. I'd like to welcome all of you and I would like to welcome those of you online who have joined us today. So I think when the history of HIV is written, San Francisco is going to feature very prominently, not only because we were an epicenter at the beginning of the epidemic, but also because of the contributions of the activists, of the community, of the academics, of the scientists, the clinicians, people working in research, people in private practice, people working in industry, people who work in the government. It really has been astounding what people in San Francisco, in the Bay Area have done from the very beginning and are continuing to do now. And in fact, that is the theme of World AIDS Day, is uniting the fight. That's why World AIDS Day was created. And speaking of contributions of San Franciscans, the idea for World AIDS Day came from someone from San Francisco, James Bunn. He and a colleague, Thomas Neder, were working at the Global AIDS Health Program in Geneva. And they said, "We need to have a day where we just stop, we pause, we talk about those people that we have lost, and we also talk about how we're going to go forward together." I'm not sure when this day was created, 35 years ago, that they thought we would still be having this day now, but I would argue that we need this day more than ever. And it's really a pleasure to share it with all of you today. And really, I'd like to thank all of you for all the impact you've had. I look around the room, it's really incredible. I'm sure if I could see all of you online, I would see many, many people who have contributed to the progress that we've seen with this disease. So for our program today, what we're going to do is, do you guys like our new banner? As we said, it took us 35 years to get this banner, okay? We are going to start with a tribute to Dr. Mark Jacobson, and then we are going to hear a talk by Dr. Monica Gandhi, the Director of CFAR, the Director of Ward 86, who is going to give us a really state-of-the-art overview of one of the hottest topics in HIV medicine, which is long-acting therapies. And then we'll hear some closing remarks by Dr. Johnson, and then we will have refreshments and music outside. So that's the run of the show that we're going to have today. So I would like to start just to say, and really brief in terms of what I'd like to say to you, Mark, to thank you for all that you have done over the years. When I was in San Diego, before I came here, I knew Mark as the leading researcher in CMV. He was very active in the networks. And then when I came here, I got to know Mark much closer, and he is a spectacular doctor. And also, and you're going to hear this from his colleagues, he's a wonderful colleague. He really brings enthusiasm to what he does. And Mark, one of the things I can tell you is that I can't tell you how many times people have come into my office and said, "You know, I had this case, and I went to Mark, and I asked him about it, and he was so helpful." And you know what? That is like a very, very special thing, and it really illustrates your collegiality, your expertise, and your impact, that what you have done has had on lives of people living with HIV. And I also want to thank Mark's family, who's with us here today. And if you don't mind, all of you standing up, because we'd all like to give you a round of applause. And I think what I would like to say to all of you is that, you know, your dad's a superstar, gets all these accolades, but I can tell you, when he talks to us, you are at the center of his universe, how proud he is of all the things that you do. And really, for that reason, it's so special to have you here for this celebration today. So we have one small modification in the program. Mark, Dr. Gooseby, I think he communicated with us somewhere in the middle of the night that he had a GI bug that had a Q-nonset, so he's not going to be able to join us, but he'll be contacting you afterwards with his remarks. And I know that he was very disappointed that he wasn't able to be with us today. So now I'm going to hand the microphone over to Dr. Deeks, Professor of Medicine, going to find the cure for HIV, who's going to give a tribute to Mark.
Diane. Yes, thank you, Diane. I do want to second that to the kids, that I've heard about you for almost, well, for many, many, many years, because Mark has always been bragging about you guys. So it's nice to meet the family. I was just going to do a little brief background, because I'm not sure many of you know about Mark's history, particularly in the 90s and the scientific stuff. So Mark graduated from UC Berkeley in 1971. And what are the photos of his, we gotta see, you gotta see Mark in the 70s, very Berkeley. And he did a little detour after Berkeley for several years, doing Berkeley kind of stuff, he can talk to you about, back in the 1970s. Yep. Ask him about that era. But somehow, after getting through the Berkeley 70s stuff, he ended up at med school at UCSF, and then did his infectious disease training, I think, at UCLA, and then ended up here 1988, I believe, 1986. And immediately, if you look at his CV, it's a really great story of how HIV and opportunistic infections evolved over the time. He got right into it, did all this work on antivirals for gang cyclovir, was one of the first to report on acyclovir resistance for varicella, did a lot of really important Phase 1 first-in-human studies, including certain cytokines and immunotherapies that no one had done before. And then I think some of the most impactful stuff was in that transition, when we started using antiretroviral therapy. And you don't know this, but Mark was one of the first to really sort of describe the concept of IRIS, and then did this great collaborative work with Mike McCune on the mechanisms, and had multiple papers, very, very productive through that entire period. And then toward the end of that particular period, began to study how we use prophylaxis in the era of R. And then my sense is, looking at your CV, is that once you sort of figured everything about OIs, he shifted back to his true love, or his original love, which was clinical medicine. And that's when, actually, I had the same experience as Diane did. I would run cases by Mark, and he would hear the case, and he would jump right into pub bed and find some archaic paper from 1980, and this and that. And it was always so much fun talking with Mark about science and medicine. And I think it's all well illustrated in what happened with COVID, right? So COVID came along, and Mark was basically recruited to help with the occupational medicine part. And I remember in 2020, 2021, Mark calls me, and he sounded like, not a kid, but like an ID fellow. And he was like so excited, like, because these, I think it was mainly women were developing these rashes, they have to get Moderna, but I don't think Pfizer. And he was like, I mean, it was like, Mark, don't you have other things to do? And it was that genuine enthusiasm for science. And I reached out to some of his colleagues, and Paul, and Mike Sagg, and Judy Kerr, and people who've known him for all the, and they all said the same thing, kind-hearted, truly, truly committed to the cause, not a big ego. And that's important, because he was working in a sea of egos back in the day. He always got the work done. He ran the opportunistic infection agenda in the ACTG for about a decade, did a great job, and just a tremendous success all along. And congratulations. And I'm now going to turn it over to one of your successful mentees, Annie. I think you're next, right? Oh, Lawrence. Yes.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, I was told this was supposed to be a roast. And then I found out late last night that it was actually a toast, not a roast. So I had to change my slides, and I was only given three minutes. So I think all of you who know me well know I like to tell a lot of stories. Steve stole some of my stories already, but I will echo the story about every time we walked by Mark's office, and his is right across the hall from mine for many years, there'd be photos of his kids. And if I asked him how things were going, it was never like, oh, you know, this and this scientific thing, or even this and this patient thing, but it was always about his family. So I've always remembered that I've always admired Mark for his dedication to his family. So thanks to all of you for lending them to us for all these years. But in any case, I like to tell a lot of stories. When I would tell stories of the great old days, when PCP was king, and that was my first academic love, and CMV was Prince, and Mark and Hopkins Stanley, who are in the back, they knew every single patient in the entire hospital was CMV, and they would review cases, right? And I would talk about some of these other legendary individuals who were the founders of our program and were sort of the foundation from which we've all benefited. I would talk about the old days, and people who shall be unnamed, but are of the younger generation would be like, you're all a bunch of dinosaurs. This is like from the prehistoric age, when OIs were king. It's not about OIs now, it's about the cure, it's about long-acting antiretrovirals, injectables. Who's seen a case of PCP this academic year? Not me, right? So this was a slide from the last time I gave a grand rounds here on PCP. And it deals with large carnivorous dinosaurs, just some selected individuals. I wish I could have put down all the others, but the talk would have been a lot longer. But some of the individuals in the room, I'm thinking most of the individuals on this slide are retired, except for some of the individuals at the bottom with a question mark. So I'm not sure who's going to be next. Steve, maybe you, maybe me, Paula. But in any case, so I'm going to, I only have three minutes, so I'm going to conclude here, but I'm going to show some other slides. So do you remember where this picture was taken?
No, but I think it was in the late 90s.
Yeah, yeah. So I think it was 2001. Paul, do you remember where this picture was taken? All right. Well, Mark, I'm going to ask you to come up, because I'm going to give you a copy of this. I don't know if for your retirement home, maybe you'll have room for this. But while you come up, I'm going to just show some of the other photos. And then if we had more time, we were going to do a little quiz to see who could name everybody in the photo, right? But I'll just keep on going, right? Looking a little more familiar, right? Yeah.
You want me to name the people?
No, no, no. Is Paul in the room? Should I go back? All right, I love it. Again? I only have three minutes here, wait a second. All right. The slides will be available for anybody, yeah. So, Mark, congratulations on your retirement. If you're a dinosaur, you'll always be a T-Rex to me.
I really, I love the topic. I did love the topic with dinosaurs.
The dinosaur slide? Popular over the year, so, all right. You can have the box if you need it, you're welcome. So now we're on to one of Mark's other mentees, Annie. Is that you?
Yeah. And I don't have slides, but I do have a timer, because I could talk for a very long time, and I'm not going to do that. So it is such a great pleasure to be able to talk about Mark. I was one of the younger generation, although I'm somewhere in between. I'm a young dinosaur, I guess, but I would be tributing to him. So when I started working here as an infectious disease fellow, I want to share just two stories. So Mark was like this really famous guy who had sort of done all this amazing work, and it was a little bit intimidating. And so the first story is, I was sitting in this same room, you know, we had a grand rounds, it was Rich Whitley, I remember this, he was talking about herpes zoster, and I had the good fortune to walk back to Ward 86 with Mark. We had this like great discussion about, my gosh, people with HIV, they get so much more pain, and should we be treating them differently? And Rich had never really sorted this out. And Mark did the Mark stare. And all of you who know Mark knows what this is, and he looked deeply into my eyes and said, "We should do a study." And I was like, what do you, what do you even mean? I'm like just trying to get through the day, you're doing, you know? And before I knew it, we had designed, you know, we reached out to Rich Whitley, who of course knew Mark, and we designed this multi-center study, and we submitted it. And it was like, it was such an inspiring moment for me, because I was really hooked from then on. And I subsequently had a career as a clinical trialist, because the thought that you could say, wow, this is really cool, and you don't know the answer, and I just saw a guy with this problem, and what are we going to do about it? And that you can translate that into actionable work was really, to me, a revelation. Now, many of you are accomplished clinical trialists, and you already know this, but for me, at that point, I was like, wow, this can be done. And Mark had faith in me, and I wrote a terrible grant, and it took forever to get it done. But he had faith in me, and it was really an inspiring moment, and it was a career-changing moment. Now, the grant was not funded, but that was also an important part. I thought he'd be so ashamed, oh my God, why'd I spend this time with this fellow who didn't know what she was doing? And Mark was like, hey, this happens, don't sweat it. Like, you know, we'll either recycle this or find another way. And I just thought that he'd be like so disappointed and never want to talk to me again. And I, this was like really my entree into academics, about the inspiring and also the challenging parts. And so thank you, Mark. It was really wonderful to have your faith in me. The second is a story that is really nicely set up by what Steve and Lawrence and Diane have said. I went to Mark with yet another, you know, advanced AIDS patient with an eye problem, and his, you know, Mark had like a revolving door on his office. We all wanted his input. He gave me great advice of what we should do. And then again, I got the Mark stare. And Mark said, "We are going to the eye room." And I was like, what is happening? So this is before we had, you know, our electronic medical record, and he took me to this like crazy room in 4M, I think, where all the charts were kept. And he was like, "You need to understand how to do this, because I'm not going to be here forever, and it's your job and your generation's job to take this on, and understand, you know, what sort of how to care for these patients." And it was such, I like had chills, because I'd always sort of, you know, you're young, you're learning things, and he put the mantle of responsibility really solidly on me and my generation, that's why I did it, to say, "You can do this, you should do this, and we expect you to do this." And, you know, you think of this generation who did this amazing work during the dark days of HIV, and you want to make sure that you could try to rise to that challenge. It always feels historic. And I thought about that moment a lot, Mark, when COVID hit. And I had you in my brain a lot of, you know, what would Mark do? Can I do this? Do we understand how to move forward here? And you helped put that faith, as well as a responsibility, on me and on all of us to say, "You can do this, and you must do this." So thank you, I think. I still don't know how to read those eye charts, but that's okay, because I think the lesson I learned that day was a little bit of a different one, and it was an inspiring one. So I want to end, I'm reading the David Brooks book, the most recent one, which is How to See People. And he had a really nice quote, what I thought really spoke to Mark, and it says, "There is one skill at the center of any healthy family, company, classroom, community, university, or nation, the ability to see someone else deeply, to know another person profoundly, to make them feel heard and understood." Mark, you did that for me, and I'm very appreciative. Thank you.
Well, Mark, it's really, I'm going to bring you up in just one minute. I'm just so touched to have you here, and I just want to tell you how inspiring you've been to me over the years. I think there are three things I want to say. The first thing I want to actually say is that World AIDS Day, to me this year, is really important. UNHDS just said that we are sort of having an unprecedented attack on human rights in the world at the moment, and anti-homosexuality laws, and anti-trans laws. And it feels more important than ever, what we're doing. And then I think there are three other ways that you inspired me. One is your love of family, and I think that was so obvious to all of us. And I was going through a lot in my family early on, and you, I would come to your office, and we would talk a lot about how to prioritize. The second is that, for me, opportunistic infections are different than antiretroviral therapy, meaning I think you may want to be a little younger to be on the antiretroviral therapy guidelines committee, because you're always like the latest, and maybe you have to look at all the studies. But OIs are about experience. It's not about the studies, it's about like a deep feel and knowledge, because you were there. And you were there for all of the opportunistic infections. And you, it was so inspiring to me when you would come and teach the fellows, because the stories you would teach were from just being there and absolutely understanding every aspect, including eye charts. And then the third is, when I became Medical Director of Ward 86, I don't know if Diane knows this, but Mark was my de facto teacher, because he was watching me, and he would always comment on what I was doing. So he would like, I would send out an email, and he'd be like too perky. Or like too bossy, or like you were just, he was, you were my mentor, you were my teacher, you were a leader, you were the head of urgent care, you were a leader, you had been a leader for so long. And I don't know if you realize what you did, but you took me so under your wing to try to help me as I was really floundering. And you would, you would just, you know, you would write like short little emails, like, no. So I really appreciate everything you did. And we are really excited to hear your remarks. We did want to present this to you as a gift from the division. This is for you and your family, a gift from us. And thank you so, so much for being here, and we're really honored to hear your remarks.
Wow. I'm going to have to, I haven't spoken to the crowd this big in a long, long time. So bear with me, I'm going to have to check my notes. Thank you. It feels, it feels really, really good to get this kind of appreciation at the end of my career. It's very meaningful, and especially with my family here, my son Mike, my daughter Sarian, her husband Chris, and my wife Alona, who supported my career choices 100% of the way. I'm just going to talk about what I'm grateful for during my career for the last 37 years. And the foremost thing, which is not easy to talk about, is the privilege of having had patients trust me enough to bare their souls and let me guide them through devastating illness and the end of life. In the 1980s and 90s, before we had effective HIV treatment, seeing how these people, mostly younger than me, handled this catastrophe with courage, and the way that their friends and family gave them love, that was a very, very transformative experience for me. I'm grateful for the opportunities I had to create knowledge that eventually could help people with this disease, and to get to know the wonderful, the wonderful people who are drawn to work here. So I can talk about the last of these without losing it. And I want to thank those who've had the most impact on my career. I'm really sorry that Eric is not here, because he had a big impact on my career in 1974, before I even applied to medical school. He and his roommate, my first mate Kent Olson, who was here for many years in the toxicology program, were first-year med students at UCSF. And I was 25 years old, working as a patient care assistant at a SNF in UCAIA, and taking the first science course that I had done since high school in the community college there. And Eric and Kent invited me to come to class with them for a day. And afterwards, we talked at dinner, and they said, they both said, "Mark, you can do this." And I did not have the self-confidence that I have now, that their encouragement and advice had a huge impact on my deciding to complete pre-med requirements and apply to medical school. So fast forwarding to 1986, I just finished Infectious Diseases Fellowship at UCLA and moved to Oakland so that Alona and I could live together. And she was already on the staff at Kaiser Oakland Hospital, which is where I chose to do my medicine residency. And I'd been promised the next infectious disease position that opened up there. I just needed a job to fill the gap. And John Mills, who is the Chief of Infectious Diseases here, hired me on a one-year contract to help him establish an NIH-funded Clinical Trials Unit, the Ward 86, now known as the ACTG. And I didn't expect to be here for longer than a year, because the other people who were clinical instructors, and you know, most of them did not stay longer than a year. And I was very surprised and delighted to find out that part of this job involved training in clinical trial design, and in pharmacokinetics, and biostatistics. John urged me to pursue a career in academic medicine, and the success that I've had would never have been possible without his guidance and real generosity. I've had other great mentors here also, one of them's here, Paul Foberdin, and Maury Shamblyn, and Neil Benowitz. I'm grateful for the fun, because this really was fun, to collaborate with people in designing studies. And those people, Donald Abrams is here, Steve Deeks, Phil Hopewell, Fran Weacon, Mike McCune, Elizabeth Sinclair, and more recently Carolyn Trabaski and Paul Blanc, who are not at this campus. I've been really fortunate, they have had the unwavering support of Diane for over 20 years. That has been fabulous for me personally. And I've also been incredibly fortunate to have had the opportunity to work with the next generation after me of HIV investigators and see them thrive. It's just, it's a very, very fulfilling experience, as Diane knows. So lastly, I want to talk about my gratitude for the friendships that I developed with people who I was able to get to know well enough to know that they were genuinely more selfless and more kind than I was. And I wanted to just say, just a few names, a little bit about them. The first of these was Connie Woffsey, who was the physician who first brought the medical needs of HIV-infected women to national attention. And I actually got to know Connie really quite well. And the next is here, is Hopkins Stanley, who helped me care for the CMV retinitis patients, who were all young people at the end of life. And we were just trying to prevent imminent blindness for the time that they had left, which required daily eye and ID infusions on Ward 86. Hopkins' limitless capacity for empathy just utterly amazed me. I want to mention Meg Newman and Catherine Lyons, because they worked so hard without any expectation of recognition, which was remarkable and something I aspired to. And lastly, I want to talk about people who were beacons of kindness. They're really truly kinder people than I am. And they include Karina Francis, who is a lead social worker on Ward 86, Jackie Tulsky, and Dan Willarchuk. How lucky for me to have been able to spend half my life here. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about long-acting antiretrovirals for the treatment and prevention of HIV infection. And we're going to talk about good things and bad things, promises and pitfalls. So I want to first discuss why long-acting. I want to go over the data on the only combination we have available of long-acting therapy, cabotegravir and rospivirin, in those with virologic suppression, and the increasing data in those with furemia. And then we'll touch on long-acting cabotegravir for prevention. We'll talk about lenacapavir, and talk about what I think are the three pitfalls of long-acting medications, and then what's coming in terms of long-acting. So the point at this point is, of course, integrase inhibitors are first line. This is as it should be. So the point at this point is, of course, integrase inhibitors are first line, this is as it should be. Vicodiver, dolitegravir have incredible data behind them in terms of starting patients who are naive, switching over. And really dolitegravir, tinofivir and lamivudine has been first line. At least in men since two thousand eighteen by the WHO and for everyone since two thousand nineteen, tinofivir, lamivudine, dolitegravir. So why would we want long-acting then, we have integrase inhibitors. There are many places where there are high rates of virologic suppression, actually Ryan White Care Clinics have an eighty nine point seven percent. Rate of virologic suppression, that is exactly our rate of virologic suppression at Ward eighty six. Many low and middle countries, including Kenya and Uganda, have over ninety five percent virologic suppression rates. But it's not everywhere and their overall, the UNAIDS estimates. That seventy one percent of those on antiretroviral therapy are virologically suppressed. And at least in this country, if you look at the entire population of those living with HIV. The latest data shows a virologic suppression rate of sixty six percent. So there's a reason, not for everyone, but there's a reason to think that we would need novel therapies. And this is part of the reason that we need long-acting. The second reason we need long-acting possibly is something I think we're going to be talking about a lot more over the next year. And this is just starting to come up, that it's now four to five years into the rollout of dolitegravir, tinofivir, lamivudine. And we need to think about integrase inhibitor resistance to a certain degree. There are many studies that looked at dolitegravir with NRTI resistance. And showed it was equally as effective as prothase inhibitors with two NRTIs even in the face of treatment experience. And two NRTIs with NRTI resistance, Sailing, Viking, Donning, Nadia, Vicent, two SD. They're all great, dolitegravir should stay first line with two NRTIs even in the face of NRTI resistance. But keep in mind that when there was failure in any of these studies, and we're still waiting from the data from Vicent. Mostly there was some integrase inhibitor resistance that emerged with dolitegravir. That did not emerge with prothase inhibitors, the most dramatic one being in the Nadia study at ninety six weeks. Nine failures with INSTI resistance and zero with ritonavir resistance, so dolitegravir is not. Completely foolproof in terms of developing resistance. And it's probably going to become the discussion for the next, I think, couple of years. That as we've now four to five years into the integrase inhibitor therapy, we need to do more monitoring and we're starting to see. Some dolitegravir resistance worldwide, this is data from the CDC. That probably the rates are between four and six percent, I think that's likely most most typical. But at least in very treatment experienced patients who never virologically suppress. Probably not taking TLD, the rates of dolitegravir resistance are going to be higher. And there was data at the workshop on resistance this year. In Cape Town that showed in Uganda that, again, people are doing extremely well, there's a ninety five percent virologic suppression rate, so this is lab-based data. Of resistance on those who are failing and in adults, probably there are four point, probably about four percent dolitegravir. Major associated resistance mutations and the rate is higher in children. And then I think this is an important study that I wanted to remind us of because this is from South Africa. And it was specifically those, what they did is they actually confirmed that people were taking dolitegravir by liquid chromatography tandem mass spec. And if you're taking dolitegravir and have a high viral load. That is the situation in which you're off and on with adherence with the dolitegravir and you're more likely to have a higher resistance rate. So the resistance rate was eleven point nine percent if you had dolitegravir exposure and a high viral load. So I think the rates of integrase inhibitor resistance could be higher in those with NRTI resistance. Children and those who have off and on adherence with dolitegravir. And so we come back to the question, could long-acting antiretroviral therapy have a role to help stem some of this? Could it help with adherence? Well, before we get to HIV, it's also clear that there are other fields that have been thinking about this for a long time. The fields that I think are most important to think about adherence is contraception, especially for young adolescent girls. And contraception and long-acting contraceptive options have always been helpful for adherence and there are multiple studies that show the pregnancy rates are decreased. With long-acting options, especially in adolescents. The other field is antipsychotic treatment that you can really increase adherence and there's reduced hospitalizations with the long-acting antipsychotics. And then really emerging, because we're just getting here with long-acting therapy for substance use disorder. And I think SUBLOCADE and long-acting injectable naltrexone, we need to do more study with, but hopefully this will help with adherence. So let's move on to what we know then about the data on long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin. For treatment in those who start with virologic suppression, this is the most common scenario. And I will summarize a lot of data in two slides. There were three clinical trials that led to the registration and to the approval of long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin. In either naive patients, that was the FLAIR study, or in patients who were treatment experienced, virologically suppressed on oral ART for at least six months. And that was even given every, the long-acting cabitegravir roprivirin was given every four weeks in ATLAS. And every eight weeks at a higher dose in ATLAS two M. And what we know at this point is that to date at one hundred and twenty four weeks, the virologic Carlos cohort done in Germany was eighty nine point five percent at twenty four weeks. There have been many studies from ID Week, from EX this year, Athena Beyond Above Combined Two Swiss Cohort, the UCSD Owen Clinic Jobs. Many, many studies that are just smaller, much, much smaller, that start patients on virologic suppression. Switch over to long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin and have similar results. Okay, what about the data on long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin in those who start without being virologically suppressed on oral ART? What about those who have viremia? Dr. Christopoulos and many others have done really important work that there is a group of patients where it's hard, of course, to take medications every day, it's really. Really hard because there's so many multiple other competing priorities. And we really wanted to think about in our clinic, but so did many other groups. Treating those without virologic suppression who cannot take oral ART with long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin when it came out in January twenty twenty one. And so we started, and I'll first talk about the Ward eighty six experience, but then I'll tell you about three other studies. We were very well aware that the inclusion criteria of the clinical trials were, of course, re-virologically suppressed on oral ART switchover. But we started a study, really a demonstration project with a lot of people involved in this room. To start people, even if they were viremic on long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin if we thought they didn't have other options. And I really want to call out Francis, who is the higher, the farm tech that we hired to start, helped start this program and Janet, who has been critical to lead the effort. We meet every two weeks with leadership and the pharmacists and pop-up leadership, including Liz and Matt. To go over patients that are going to start. And we now have two hundred and sixty one patients who have been started on long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin as of yesterday and thirty seven patients on long-acting prep. And we've only published, results at least published, but we have an abstract that that Matt will present soon. But we have published the the results from the first one hundred and thirty three patients on long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin. The patients were really, a lot of them were in pop-ups, sixty eight percent were marginally housed or homeless. And essentially those who are virologically suppressed stayed virologically suppressed and those who are viremic did quite well. We do have follow-up data that will be presented by Dr. Hickey and Christopoulos at Croy twenty twenty four accepted abstract. That the overall virologic suppression rate in those who started with viremia is eighty five percent. That's actually very equivalent to eighty seven percent, the eighty five percent that we saw in Carousel, Carlos and the other groups with virologic suppression. And I do think it's important to say that, what's the counterfactual? This was a modeling study that was published in OFID in twenty, just last, in August. But if you do your best and try as hard as you can to give people oral ART who have barriers to taking oral ART. At least in this modeling study, you get about a thirty eight percent virologic suppression rate. So the counterfactual of having eighty five percent is much, much better and we're happy that we started this program. So are there other groups that are looking at starting long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin in those with viremia? Well, I, yes, there was a study published in Clinical Infectious Diseases from the University of Mississippi. In Jackson, Mississippi, I really want to call out Vivek Jain, who really is on the editorial board of CID and told me he really helped get this paper in because it was an important paper. These are twelve patients who started really, really difficult adherence to antiretroviral therapy, just couldn't do it. And these twelve patients had high viremia, started a long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin and all twelve suppressed. There is also the Trio Health HIV Network, this was a study from, presented at ID Week in Boston this year. And this is in, this is, this, it hasn't really broken down our results, but basically ten percent of the patients they started had viremia. And then I wrote the authors yesterday and I still can't figure out what the, they just told us the overall virologic expression rates, I don't know if it's different in those with viremia or virologic expression, but it's about eighty eight percent. Less than two hundred, seventy nine percent less than fifty. I want you to remember that, less than fifty, less than two hundred, because this is going to start coming up when we talk about the pitfalls. So, and then finally at ID Week this year was the OPERA cohort and the OPERA cohort is an electronic medical record cohort database of patients across the United States. So it represents about fourteen percent of people living with HIV. And in the OPERA cohort, one hundred and seventy nine individuals were started on long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin when their viral load was. When they had viremia, greater than fifty copies per ml. And the ultimate result was that eighty two percent achieved less than fifty copies per ml. And ninety four percent achieved less than two hundred copies per ml. This comment about less than fifty and less than two hundred will be coming up when I ask you about questions later on. So because of this, I think that there are thought leaders in the world calling to have long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin. Added to the guidelines for patients who can't take oral ART, this was a piece from Paul Sachs in the New England Journal. Blog, but I think this is important because a lot of people come up to us at meetings and say, you know, I, we saw what you did and we started patients on long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin. And they're probably not reporting it, but there are a lot of patients who, if you cannot take oral, this has been really helpful. I will now go into the fact that there are three risk factors, because this is going to get into our pitfall question. There are three risk factors that came out in FLAIR, ATLAS and ATLAS two M for failing a long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin. So HIV subtype A1 and A6 was very minor and in fact, people in Poland are telling me they're still using it, long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin in these subtypes because it was a very minor risk factor, so we'll see if we get more data on that. But having a high BMI, greater than thirty and also the, of course, having any roprivirin resistance mutations. Were two major risk factors for failing long-acting cabitegravir and roprivirin. So this brings up the question of, do we have to give the drugs differently? Can you totally fix the BMI problem by giving drugs with a longer needle into deeply into the intramuscular space? Do you have to give it into the thigh, J-Cure in our, gives almost all the injections in our clinic and and there are patients who are getting thigh injections. And there was an ID Week poster just this week, just in Boston last month. That shows that some patients are preferring to give home injections. But it may be more painful to give it in the thigh, but it does look like pharmacokinetically thigh injections, at least in the data so far, gives PK equivalents to giving it in the gluteal muscle. So let's turn to data on long-acting cabitegravir for prevention. So, you know, we all know that there are two major trials that showed that really not just equivalence, but superiority. Of long-acting cabitegravir given every two months to oral TDF FTC for both men and women essentially. And the HPTN oh eight three study was first published in the New England Journal in twenty twenty one, but there was just a follow-up in Lancet HIV. Just a month ago and that study showed that the sixty six percent superiority was actually maintained. Through the unblinded phases of the trial and the first open label extension year. So it is easier to get a, I think, a injection every two months than it is to take daily oral TDF FTC. I do need to mention though that there is one pitfall, which is that this didn't happen in HPTN oh eight four, which I'll talk about in a minute, but in HPTN oh eight three. There were people who failed, there were people who Sarah converted. And there was a certain rate of integrase inhibitor resistance that developed in those individuals. There were thirty four CABP failures and eighteen out of those thirty four did evolve INSTI resistance. So this is a trial of cisgender men and transgender women. And this, these, this failure rate is something that we have to worry about and think about. And these are the mutations that guide us for cabitegravir-associated mutations. The HPTN oh eight four study was specifically done in Africa, I think that's important because HPTN oh eight three was across the world, Brazil, US, other places. This is an African-based study and it is in cisgender women. And there was even more superiority, meaning that the hazard ratio was point one two, eighty eight percent reduction. Of cabitegravir every eight weeks versus getting daily oral TDF FTC. And importantly, there were no failures with resistance, there were some failures, there were six total. But there were zero failures with resistance. And I think this is a research question or an important question is, why did the men fail in HPTN oh eight three and there was no failure with resistance in HPTN oh eight four? Is it men, is it women, is it Africa versus not, what is happening there? We do know, we do know that the tail of cabitegravir is longer in cisgender women than it is in men. And that was something that we knew about even before the trials came out. And not only is the tail longer, but there was data presented at Croy last year. That in HPTN oh eight four, there was quite a bit of missed, sort of delayed doses, there was about a twelve percent coming in quite late for your injection. And even if you came in four to six weeks late or six to eight weeks or even eight to ten weeks late, it was pretty high cabitegravir levels. In the, in the cisgender women in HPTN oh eight four, in fact, four to six weeks, ninety eight, late, right? So this is eight, four to six weeks past the eight weeks, there was ninety eight percent of the of the women had PK levels above what we think is the predictive level. So I think there's some questions here, is there more PK forgiveness in cisgender women? Is there more, it does have to do pharmacogenetically with the location of individuals in African sites. I do think we have to study cabitegravir every three months because it could be put with Depo-Provera every three months in women. And there is, by the way, in development in every four-month cabitegravir formulation. Okay, let's turn to lenacapavir and then I'm really interested in your thoughts on the pitfalls of medications. So lenacapavir is a capsid inhibitor and I don't, I don't think I understand it enough, but it doesn't look like it just. Acts at the level of the capsid formation after the virus has been released. It looks like there are some points in in the HIV replication cycle that it influences even at nuclear transport. And I wonder if that has any implications for the reservoir or anything else and I'd be really interested in in Steve's opinion on that. But there's only really two studies in treatment for lenacapavir. One's called Capella, one's called Calibrate. And we had to kind of almost forget about Calibrate because it's in naive patients and there's not a seeking of an indication. Of lenacapavir in naive patients because it was a very small study. But Capella was also a very small study, but you can have a small study and still get approval if you're studying it in a rare phenotype population. And the rare phenotype is multi-drug resistant HIV, so patients had NRTI resistance, PI resistance and NRTI and INSTI resistance. And they were randomized in in one tiny arm and and they just had open label in another cohort. There was only seventy two patients in the Capella study, but the design was that multi-drug resistant HIV, you put lenacapavir with an optimized background regimen. Versus the optimized background regimen alone. And we now have data out to a hundred and four weeks of the Capella study. This was the New England Journal study that only showed us the twenty six week data. That of course lenacapavir really did reduce viral loads much more than the optimized background regimen, this led. To the approval of lenacapavir in December twelfth, twenty twenty two by the FDA. But we now have data out to a hundred and four weeks, we had fifty two week data published in the Lancet HIV and we have a hundred and four week data published at ID Week in Boston this year. And the thing about lenacapavir is very interesting, is that there's only seventy two patients, it's kind of like those eighteen patients in paddle, like you really start to get to know these patients. And seventy two participants, a full-on fourteen, developed lenacapavir resistance. Now, it wasn't that they just didn't have background agents that worked. Sometimes because they did drug levels, they weren't taking their optimized background regimen. If you get to multi-drug resistant HIV, it was hard for you to take the oral pills every day and so they did drug levels and they actually weren't taking. And so they did drug levels and they actually weren't taking the optimized background regimen. And lenacapavir walked alone. And I think it can never walk alone because it gets resistance really quickly. So 14 out of 72 developed resistance. But with adherence counseling, by taking that optimized background regimen, seven out of those 14 resuppressed. So I think lenacapavir still has some activity as long as you have it with something else in the background regimen. And that's how I think we have to think about lenacapavir. And then what about the Calibrate study? I don't mean to say forget about this, but this is such a small study. It's a phase IIb study, not a phase III, that this will not meet the criteria for indications for using lenacapavir in naive patients. The design of the Calibrate study was quite interesting because lenacapavir was paired with drugs which were made by the same drug company, but in combinations that we're never going to be able to access. And what I mean by that is lenacapavir was put with TAF FTC and then with BIC alone. So lenacapavir-BIC was one group. That's not something we can, we can, we can get because we can't get big tegrevir alone. Group two is lenacapavir. Sorry, that was just lena, sorry, group one is lenacapavir with TAF alone. Group two is lenacapavir eventually with big tegrevir alone. Group three is, and group four essentially controls. And what did this study show? Well, the 80-week data of the Calibrate study was updated at CROI last year. And you can see that groups one, remember, are lenacapavir with TAF, 87% suppression rate, and lenacapavir with BIC, 75% virologic expression rate. Lenacapavir with big tegrevir is the closest thing I can think of, of an arm that looks like lenacapavir with cabotegravir, which I'm going to talk about next. So this is very small. This is not going to be an indication, lenacapavir is not indicated for, and not approved for treatment in naive patients. But we do have some data of the use of lenacapavir with single agents in the Calibrate study. And then finally, lenacapavir is going to be and is underway in being studied as a preventative agent every 26 weeks in many, many different patient groups. Essentially, both men and women, but also non-binary transgender and a really, really diverse patient population in the purpose one and purpose two studies. Okay, so I, I wanted to mention lenacapavir, cabotegravir only because we do have about 14 people in our clinic on this combination. And this is a patient of mine who just had to leave, but he's, always says to me that, please present, present me because he is someone who has done a lot of advocacy for groups around the city about adherence. He himself told me that he just was very tired of taking pills after having been diagnosed since the mid-'90s, starting out with AZT, being on multiple regimens and essentially just hit a wall and simply could not take pills anymore. And so he did come to me, he had NNRTI mutations that are all listed here. And he also had NRTI mutations and could not take oral pills anymore. He had NNRTI mutations and I could not start cabotegravir or ropivirine. And in terms of NNRTI mutations, there's a very variable rate around the world. And some of this is probably lack of surveillance, but we know that efavirenz TDF FTC was first-line therapy for about 15 years. So there's going to be a certain degree of NNRTI resistance. The countries that are listed as having the highest rates are mainly in Latin America and also South Africa, and they can have rates as higher than 20%. The last WHO Surveillance Report, which is in 2021, actually calculated how much ropivirine resistance there was if they looked at the specific mutations that they knew about. And the ropivirine resistance rate is, ranges from 2.7 to 18.7% around the world. And so, so this patient had a viral load of 1.5 million, a CD4 count of 142. So on December 12th, 2022, he actually called me and he said, I just saw that this new drug got approved. So he encouraged his own treatment regimen. And we did, got it a couple, a month or so later and we started him on lenacapavir and cabotegravir. We started the cabotegravir every four weeks. We gave two oral loading doses of lenacapavir and started at 927 every six weeks. And then we changed the cabotegravir to every two months at a higher dose, 600 milligrams, once he was virologically suppressed. He has been virologically suppressed this entire time. And we have a upcoming abstract at CROI that is a case series of 34 patients on lenacapavir and cabotegravir, who mostly were switched to that combination because of NNRTI resistance. And we are encouraging drug companies to perform a trial of this combination specifically in the group of patients with NNRTI resistance. Okay, let's talk about pitfalls of long-acting medications and then get your input. So I don't really know if this is a pitfall. This is something I've been talking to pharmacokineticists about and I'm very curious about. But when you think about long-acting with pregnancy, for example, you don't, you don't have an interplay in contraception, you don't have an interplay with a virus. And this is the first time that we've had a long-acting medication that's interplaying with a pathogen. And it's a very interesting question because if you take an oral pill every day, you get super-high levels, Cmax, and then you come down, then you get super-high levels the next day, Cmax, then you come down. And the virus always sees, is kind of hit every day with a high Cmax, every single day, because we take pills daily. But in the case of lenacapavir, you do get with the oral loading dose a certain increase and after the injection, but then you just get a steady decline in concentration. So the virus is not contending with super-high levels every day. It's contending with slow decline in concentrations. And I will tell you that all the studies in viroemic patients, which are very tiny, including our own, it looks like if we used a viral load cutoff of less than 200, the success rates are much higher. And we don't know if, what it takes to get to less than 50 versus less than 200 as, as the, the PK levels are declining. And this is something we're thinking about a lot, that what's the interplay of the virus and the drug levels at the end of the dosing interval? What we do know about drug levels with depot formulations or with intramuscular formulations of the long-acting antiretrovirals to date is very little actually. Because what you really need is big population pharmacokinetic studies with population PK modelers helping you to figure out, what are the drug levels in a real-world population? And is it just BMI or is there sex, age, other factors that go into PK levels? This is the biggest population PK study we have of cabotegravir and ropivirine, and it's only 46 people and 91 samples. And even from this very small study, the ropivirine levels were very variable. Cabotegravir was more stable, ropivirine was all over the place. And if any drug should be all over the place, it shouldn't be in an NNRTI, which has a low genetic barrier resistance. And there was at EX, a case of a failure with cabotegravir and ropivirine. There were actually five failures and three had low ropivirine levels, three had low cabotegravir levels and one had both. So we need bigger studies, population PK studies to figure out all the determinants of drug levels. Because drug levels with a drug that's administered in a long-acting way is not just dependent on the individual, it's also dependent on technique and where you put it. And if you get it in the right space and if you get it in the intramuscular space or the subcutaneous space. And so there's just going to be a lot more variability. And I think this is a major pitfall and something we have to think about. The second major, the, the, the other pitfall is nodules. And I really want to mention this because this was a pooled analysis from the Capella and Calibrate studies, 72 people and 151 total. And that's a pretty small group, but this was combination data actually from ID Week and EX. But you can see that even though there was a report that the swelling in erythema went down, nodules lasted a full 252 days. That's, you know, half a year, that's the entire six months. And then you get another injection and then you get the nodules again. And actually, those nodules are a feature. They're not, they're, they're not a bug. Because the nodules are the depot formulation under your skin, putting out low levels of lenacapavir over time. And this really could cut down on acceptability, especially if you're going to be thinking about this every six months for prevention. So this is a first generation, but we have to think about the acceptability of having nodules. And then I want to end with new long-acting formulations. If you talk to any pharmaceutical company, they're like, we're developing a new long-acting INSTE. But what do we have data on? Because we only have two long-acting formulations that we have data on that have been published, that have been presented recently. They were both, these were, these were actually at IAS 2023 in Australia. So this is the islatrovir implant. Now, it specifically, we had seen data before for islatrovir alafenamide. This is actually islatrovir alone. And it looks very promising. This is an animal model, so that's important to say because they had to take a step back because islatrovir alafenamide really went down too low in humans. So islatrovir animal model alone looks like it has a very, very long half-life. So let's think about islatrovir implants. That needs to be studied, of course, in humans next. The second is a subcutaneous formulation. This is also an animal model in children, for babies and children of three drugs together, big tegrevir, islatrovir and amtracidibine. Would be very nice to have every six-month formulation for children when we think about only 52% of children accessing antiretroviral therapy, the higher rates of resistance, how hard it is to suppress children. So this is very promising that there could be one implant that has three drugs every six months, subcutaneous for children. Need more data. And then I think the thing that is closest, because it's actually been studied in humans now, or at least we're starting a study, sorry, they're starting a study in humans, is the TAF implant, at least in the MACAC model. The TAF implant gave pretty high levels and then decreases over time. So the CAPRISA 018 is just about to start, which is going to look at the TAF implant in low-risk women and see what the levels look like. So in conclusion, I think long-acting formulations of HIV medications are exciting. They're the latest advance. We've been working on them here. I think that could help adherence. We have a lot of data now in those with virologic suppression. And I think we're getting more data in those who have a hard time taking HIV medications daily. I think lenacapavir is also promising, but it's only been studied for MDRHIV. I think there should be a trial with cabotegravir in NNRTI-resistant patients. And I think the nodules could be limiting. And the other pitfalls is that we don't know enough about PK. And what is the viral load cutoff that we're going to tolerate? And we discuss this every time we meet in splash. And then implants, I think, are probably getting closer. And so thank you so much to Dr. Havlier, my, who's given me these opportunities to be at Word86, the division and Word86, whom I love. And thank you to everyone here. And we'll take time.
Can you hear me? Okay, Monica, thanks. Incredible overview. I just was curious, particularly, particularly with other NNRTI mutations that are not ropivirine resistance mutations. You talked about tightening up, how you're thinking about it. And when you look at that recent publication by Orkin et al. and CID, when they looked at the phase III trials, you know, the other NNRTI mutations didn't make it in that top three. But if you look at the point estimates of the, of the odds ratios, they're, they're increased. And the P-values are right around like 0.06, 0.08, just suggesting that it could add some additional information. But I think it only identified in these phase-three trials one person who actually had other NNRTI mutations that were not ropivirine-associated. And the reason I'm wondering is how to interpret that because these are trials that actually excluded anyone with NNRTI mutations except for K103N. And just curious, I guess, two points. One, are you weighing different NNRTI? If they're not ropivirine-associated, how are you thinking about that? That's one question. The second is for patients that are viroemic and maybe have a history of K103N or even don't, or starting with high viral loads, what is the role, not just a baseline, but a post-base line measurement of ropivirine levels in certain people? For example, with borderline BMI or other risk factors we might think of for lower ropivirine levels at four weeks. Thanks.
Yeah, those, that is such an excellent question. So what Gabe is referring to is that it was first authored by Chloe Orkin, but the CID that were in, in May was a multi-variable model of the risk factors that essentially led to cabotegravir ropivirine failure in the FLARE, ATLAS and ATLAS 2M trial. And the most important predictor was of course having any ropivirine-associated rams. But it mattered what those resistance mutations were. So what we have done, and I really give a lot of credit to Janet Kretchowski for doing this, is that we went through a very comprehensive list, pulled out abstracts, pulled out studies. Echo and Thrive was kind of our substratum, comparing efavirenz to ropivirine of the ropivirine-associated mutations that we think are the most important. But we also looked at abstraction of other meetings and we have a huge spreadsheet. And we are going to be coming up and announcing which ropivirine-associated mutations we like and we will accept and which ones we won't. For example, Liz and I have had very deep conversations about V179I because we had one patient who failed, but he was on rifabutin as well. And is it the V171I, which did not come out in Echo and Thrive? Or was it that the patient had lower ropivirine mutate, levels? And so as you indicated, I think doing ropivirine and cabotegravir levels and especially ropivirine, given the incredible PK variability specifically of that medication and its profound kind of weakness in terms of level of resistance, I think ropivirine levels are going to be really important. And in fact, they're doing that standardly in Amsterdam. This is the group that I told you about that we, they showed the failures at EX. They do not start without doing therapeutic drug monitoring. They've incorporated that into their clinical care. And so we do have labs here at UCSF that can do these levels. But I think what we first have to do is a study, which we're putting in a grant for on a baseline population PK model of ropivirine levels in the splash cohort for anyone who signs up. And then we will be doing, I think we should incorporate therapeutic drug monitoring into our work.
So Monica, so lenacapavir, if I understand it, is the only drug that we have that blocks the virus post-integration, pre-release, right? So it'll block, so a virus is being produced, transcribed, translated, made. You know, this is the only drug that will prevent it from leaving the cell. So has this been, has a drug been studied in these persistently low-level viroemic states to see if it'll basically suppress that virus and that may or may not help for various reasons?
That is such a good question because there, I think there's three things I wonder about lenacapavir. One, as I didn't highlight, but in the Capella study, there was quite a high increase in CD4 cell count. And we just had a patient, 81 was the median in a very short period of time. And we had a patient recently on service, Vivek's patient that we were discussing, should we add lenacapavir to try to get the CD4 cell count up because we can't get it up? So that's one question. And I don't, and does that have anything to do with the mechanisms that you just mentioned? Second is that, could it help with patients who chronically have low-level viaremia? Presumably that has something to do with the big reservoir, but you would tell me a large reservoir. And, and that study concept has been proposed in the ACTG. It's not passed yet, but I, and I don't know if it will be. But I think that's, I think the very question that you asked is being, is being raised. And what will it do to the reservoir measurements as well? Not just low-level viaremia, but the reservoir. So I think these are, these are very interesting and important questions that are coming up.
Monica, I wonder if you would comment on the implants? The scientists are super excited about the implants. The academics are super excited about the implants. But it seems like the data that I've seen from the patient surveys, some which have done by our fellows and our, our team here, that, that people with, living with HIV don't seem as excited. Do you want to maybe just comment on that?
Yes, I think that's a really good question because both Dr. Jorge Salazar and Kat Christopoulos have, have really thought long and hard about long actings and if people would, the desire for implants. And remember that when we were looking at long-acting cabotegravir and ropivirine, when it was just a glimmer in the eye, there were a lot of patient-reported outcomes that said, I want this. And so it could be that it's not as acceptable in people living with HIV than it was with contraception. I will say however, that I did look back at the literature and there was a lot of opposition to implants, prior to implants in contraception, meaning it seemed like it was just too invasive to have it in there for so long and it was in your body and people didn't want it. And that was what was reported. And then later, when it came out, there was more acceptability. So we'll have to see, you know, as we go forward.
Anything in the chat? So, you know, life is complicated, stuff happens. So, and people going through life, for whatever reason, will end up stopping their treatment. And it's hard to predict. So if someone commits to these long-acting like cabotegravir because of that tail, So if someone commits to these long acting like cabategaver because of that tail, how long do they have to commit to treatment? How long before, like, like a year later, if they, if they stop their drugs? Is enough cabategaver around to select for resistance, the virus rebounds? How, how long do they have to be on treatment to protect the tail?
That was, that's a very interesting question. And essentially, the only data that we'll have on that is from the HB10083, both the phase three study, the unblinded phase and the open label extension. And we start oral therapy right away. Like if you, you know, stop your cabategaver and ropivery, we have people home, I hope, with a bridge, not with cabategaver and ropivery separately as a bridge. We don't believe in that. That's too low genetic barriers to resistance and they're two separate drugs. We give them, you know, drunavir, COBE, TAF FTC or big TAF FTC, something that they're at home with as a bridge. Because we don't want that tail to start going down. But the question is that what, how long after you stop the cabategaver, do you start getting into the phase where it's drug selective pressure for resistance, but it's not high enough to actually suppress the virus? And at least from HB10083, I would give it zero days. And what I mean by that is there were a lot of, there were failures that occurred with on time injections. And that really speaks to the pharmacokinetic variability of these agents. It's not, it's particular to the individual or how you just gave the injection. And the fact that there were failures that occurred, even when the injections were given exactly as they should be, means that, and they didn't do cabategaver drug levels, means that I think this PK variability and what Gabe is talking about in therapeutic drug monitoring, this could be the place where it's, where it becomes incredibly important. And I don't know how long it took to get like vanco troughs or gentamicin therapeutic drug monitoring. I mean, there are drugs that we standardly look at troughs and peaks. But I think of all the drugs that we want to think about TDM, I think it's going to be, end up being these drugs.
Last call for questions? Okay, great. All right, Monica, thank you so much for that. Great. So I'm Mallory Johnson, I'm the professor and colleague of everyone today. And I am the director of the Center for AIDS Prevention Studies. And I get the honor of having the last word today before we, I don't know if our musical act has arrived yet, but I'm sure he's coming. So this was a fantastic program. And I really think about World AIDS Day as an opportunity to look back and look forward. And I feel like we've done a really beautiful job of that, to look over a really productive, impactful career. And to, and to have an update on the latest advancements in HIV prevention and treatment. And, you know, I think back to when I started working in HIV almost 30 years ago. And I know I was, I look way too young, but it's true. But the, and I, you know, I was, I grew up gay in Alabama and I did my graduate training in Alabama. And so I was working in 1917 clinic at University of Alabama Birmingham, straight from the beginning of my graduate training. And just watching my peers get infected, get sick and way too often dying. And at that time, the, what we had in terms of prevention was use condoms or, God forbid, don't have sex. Those were the options. And then for treatment, were, you know, many patients desperately taking AZT and then the drugs that came after that, which we know was not a particularly efficacious scenario. So really going from there to seeing these, you know, all these advancements in what we have now. In a way, I'm torn because on the one hand, I think in, you know, 30 years ago, World AIDS Day and 35 years ago, when it first started, I don't think many people that were acknowledging World AIDS Day thought we would still be having a World AIDS Day celebration or whatever we're calling it in 2023. And that we would have ended the HIV epidemic. And so I, there's still so much work to done, to do. We've done tremendous amounts. And as I think about all the, the data that Monica presented, it just makes me think of like, what the challenges that we have going forward are. And those are really, and Monica highlighted that, some of the work at Ward 86 and other places, about the fair and equitable access to these technologies and support for people who've accessed them. And so really making sure that these innovations don't have the unintended consequence of deepening already pretty terrible disparities that we have. And so really just not making sure that all groups are allowed, are given access and supported. And really with that is the stigma, HIV stigma that is pervasive and perhaps mounting even worse recently, mistrust, disinformation, misinformation, and all of the, you know, structural and interpersonal barriers with housing insecurity and food insecurity and all, all of the work that is the real life of people that we're talking about in these, in these slides. And so I think there's tremendous amounts of work to do. I think we're, you know, the, the science and the technology is getting there. And now I think all of the other support, research, implementation, research and, you know, behavioral and social research to really put all of this into action so that we can get to where we won't be having World AIDS Day forever. So thank you all for coming. I know we have Satish joining us, but I don't know if he's here anywhere. But we do have coffee, so hang out, network, connect. Thank you all.